All right, we're recording?
We're recording.
All right. I'm Paul Concomiller, I'm Chair of the City of Grotton Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm going to call our meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four to order at six thirty six P M. First item on the agenda is roll call. I am here, Ms. Bergeron is here, Mr. Boris is here. Mr. James is here, Mrs. Lautrup is here, and Mr. Rusk is here. Mr. Jenkins is absent. Next item is approval of minutes. The first one is from the June eleventh, twenty twenty four special meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that day.
I have a motion from Mr. James. Is there a second? Second from Mrs. Lautrup. And changes, comments from anybody? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from June eleventh, twenty twenty four special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Sir, approve six zero zero. All right, next minutes from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So vote.
Motion from Mr. Rusk. Second by Mr. Boris. Anybody have any changes on those? Comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Those minutes are approved, six zero zero. All right, and last, the final one. Minutes from the July second, twenty twenty four special meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Again, a motion from Mr. James. The second from Mrs. Lautrup. All right, um, any changes or? Anybody have a discussion? On those minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July second, twenty four, twenty twenty four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstention, Mr. Boris. All right. First item on the agenda for the regular meeting is the confirmation of receipt of bylaws. Um, and a June twenty fifth email from Leslie, everybody get them. All right, does anybody have any changes that they would like to? This is our one time of year, we can make changes, if anybody has any ideas. How's it going to? We'll bring them forward. Maybe some hats or swag or something.
Yeah. Bring it up to the council.
Well, I, I did, I mean, I, I printed it out with the best of intentions to bring them over. I haven't done that yet. Um, but according to the bylaws, we can make changes at a different time than in.
Okay.
We just refer to two thirds of them. So.
Do you want to post on this so much?
I haven't given it a review, I don't know about anybody else. Well, if, if you have time, take a look. And then we'll, we can bring, we can put it on the agenda for the next week. And uh. See if anybody has.
Continue it to the next regular meeting.
All right, um. Next item on the agenda is election of officers. This. Yeah, I didn't think that happens in July. Um, and we, uh, have three officers of, of the commission, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary. And we, nominations are from the floor. So, uh, we'll start with the Chair as their nomination of someone to be the Chair of the Commission. And now me, sir. Right, Mr. Boris nominates Paul Concomiller. Is there a second? Second from, from Mr. James. All right, um, are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of electing Paul Concomiller Chair of the. Planning and zoning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, there's me. So. Five, zero, one. All right, um. Next item is a nomination for Vice Chair. So, and nominations for Vice Chair of the Commission?
Nominating the incumbent, Robert Boras.
All right.
All right, nomination for Mr. Mr. Rusk. A second from Mrs. Lautrup. Um. Any other nominations? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Robert Boris as Vice Chair of the. Planning and zoning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's approved. Six, zero, zero. All right, and the last office is Secretary. Yeah.
One was the first one, five zero one.
Because they have states. There's an after.
Okay.
It would be another state.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to learn why that's. Six zero zero.
No, you, you don't have to abstain from.
There's no shame in doing a creature.
All right, and third motion for the Officer Secretary.
Motion for the incumbent.
All right. Boris nominates Ms. Bergeron.
I second that motion.
And that's the second by. Mr. Rusk. Any other nominations for Secretary? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Ms. Bergeron as Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And any extensions? All right, so that's approved, six zero zero. Congratulations. All right, um. Ongoing business, so we've got the discussion of, uh, uh, possible zoning regulation amendments. And also, um, we might talk about open space or nothing, filling houses. Um. Leslie, you sent out an update on the, uh. On the zoning, right, so to incorporate the discussion from our last meeting in July, correct?
Yes, I hope that had. It was supposed to have, I did, um. And did an update. And flesh out the, um, definitions. Some of them include diagrams, most of them were just text. Um, and that. I'll, I'll go when, when we finalize the text. I will go over that with a. Fine to follow and make sure that everything that is in the text. That we need to find is in. Definitions. And these definitions would be. Um. Specifically for the G C Rs. So that. There's, if there, there are not likely to be different definitions. But. We're not at the point where we're using terms like a. Street screen. Or something like that in. Our regular. Set of regulations, yeah. So.
So these are silly, basically, and it. The first page is define terms for the G C and G C Rs.
Yes.
Does, uh, uh, do we have any questions or comments on these? I, um, I guess I had, had a couple of things, one on accessory dwelling units. I had a note from the last meeting that we were gonna define.
Sorry?
A note from the last meeting, we're gonna define like size and bulk or something about. A D U's.
Yes, and I. Need to find a set. Of regulations that I am happier with than what I have found. Um, I want to make sure that what we have in there, that what we're putting in there is something that is. Um, there were, I think there were two definitions that I didn't. Put in, um. And that was one of them.
Well, I mean, you have the definition, it just doesn't include like bulk and size, which was something that we talked about.
But I think.
Is there one to use up?
Great. Um.
Were we going to? Have rules about height and bulk and size and setback and that elsewhere?
It's in. Yeah, it was.
So.
It is in, the height is at twenty five. That was what we agreed on, and it's in the. Um, it's not in the definitions, it's in the. That bulk table.
Okay.
And it should be right in. Should be correct. As the secondary. Rowing around.
Okay, so, so those are. Those are within the mention standards then?
They did have a lot of good idea and. Suggestions and that's a meeting today. You try to put into it again. They had. Uh, things that I had never thought about that definitely should be thought about. And I'm gonna bust for it, getting with. Um, one guy, I think it was from Stonington and Northstone, and he said they just finalized. Their, uh, regulations. And one of the things that they had put in there was. Could now be used for short term.
Which. Yeah, that, well, that's a, and that's a, um. It's a big problem in some occasions that people are putting in A D U's specifically to be used as a. Short term.
That's, I think that's why, uh, that's one reason why we, it does, it gives us to wait for the. Court cases.
So, in the most previous legislative session, they passed a new. Public Act regulating short term rentals, essentially giving power to, um. Town legislatures, so in our case, city council would have the authority of short term rentals, which takes effect October versus this year.
Right, and that, that would be done as an ordinance. But for anything that would be. My concern is compliance with the Fair Housing Act. Um. Primarily because then it's. All kinds of questions about who do you let live where? And. If you look at the. I think it behooves us to. Um. Wait and have the council wait. Um. Until. Of course, court case.
There's a basic court case also that's pending.
Basically, I think.
I, I don't, I don't know the specifics of the court case, I just know that there's, there's a court case pending and. Guidance, I think, well, the guidance I heard from the. Regional planning and zoning meeting was to. Sit tight until the court case is decided, because I think that whatever you do, you could be wrong.
I know, I think it was Lebanon put, put a moratorium on their short term rental regulations, uh, basically for that same reason.
Right, and, and the, the town actually did too, they, they gave it an ordinance. That come of the. Of court case. So, I mean, I think that's, that makes sense, um. This is where it goes. If we've got, if the city has legislative authority from the state to, to regulate, then that's in ordinance there. Come from the mayor and the council. Uh, let's see. Well, that turns out, um. I, I have another question on, it's on page five, it's on layer.
I'm sorry?
Page, it's on page five, it's the layer.
Yes.
So, I mean, we've got, we're defining three layers, right, but it's. How, how was a layer boundary defined?
So, layer boundary is defined as the, the first layer is. From the. Front setback, from, I'm sorry, from the front, um, property line. As far back as. I had to close. So, in. Some places, there will be things that are. Identified as where they're allowed and where they're not allowed by the layer. There are three layers. The first layer is where you can't have parking. Is one example. Um, you can. Decide whether or not you want to allow encroachment into that first layer. Uh, it's not necessarily the same as the front yard setback. Um. The. So, it, it's a little bit. More nuanced than that. But. We talked about parking, we talked about allowing. Handicapped parking in the first layer, but not. Um. You know, or, or, you know, like fifteen minute drop off. Kind of parking in the front. But that other parking would be required to be in the third layer, which is in the back.
So is that, so is that layer language included anywhere currently, or?
It is, yes, it is, it is included in the, um. In the chart. The bell chart.
In our regulations.
Oh, it's not in our current regulations, no.
It is, I did.
Yes, but it is in here.
Define, I mean, just wondering.
Yes.
If it's used anywhere outside of the definitions, yeah.
Yes. Um, and the. The second layer is where you can put. Um, for instance, the. A secondary building or. Parking, you know, a garage. Which is the front yard setback plus twenty feet. So that you're not. And, and those, if there's a very short setback, if you have a denser area, this is just speaking in general. You're gonna have a smaller setback, so you're gonna have that, it's gonna be twenty feet plus that smaller setback, so it will be. It could be closer to the street. Um, but it still puts the. Automobile storage unit of whatever kind in. In, you know, further back, so that it's not part of the street line. Um, and then things like dumpsters and trash. Receptacles. All would go into the, and the bulk of the parking. Like. Into the third layer.
So, I guess, so, in, in view of that. Should we define somewhere what? First layer and second layer?
It should be in the, if it's not in the definitions, there's a, there's a.
There's a graphic.
Yeah, there's a graphic.
The graphic included only includes twenty feet for the second layer, it doesn't lay out the length of the first and third layer.
Okay, I will, th- that's why I said I know I need to go back and make sure that these are.
Yeah, I mean, when John, I might just bring it up and say here something that.
Yeah.
That would make sense, I think, do some elaboration on so.
Yes.
More clear, so otherwise, you might get a lot of questions from people.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on that?
Mine, mine are further page, on page twelve, we have the dimensional standards graphic. Uh, nothing is written under secondary building front setbacks, there's just nothing, it's a blank call, it's a blank row. So I just wasn't sure if that just was included or accidentally deleted.
Um. Wait.
So under sec- second, uh, secondary buildings, under setbacks, there's front setback and it is an empty row.
Okay, I'm seeing that it's a. Twenty foot minimum plus building setback.
So, so maybe front step back is written twice?
That's the, that's for the secondary building, I think.
Oh.
Principal building is, is, it is.
Oh, principal.
Subtrack is blank.
Yes, console, yeah.
And I, so I, I oppose that too, and I, in my, in my notes in the last meeting. I thought we were gonna change it all to zero to eighteen foot backs.
That's what I have ready for, okay.
All right, anybody other things?
Yeah, we'll lay it in front of, um, the definition of, uh, accessory building.
Definition, um.
Very first definition. So an outbuilding with an accessory unit. We don't, we don't define accessory unit, but just a few. Characters away that we define accessory dwelling unit.
And. How is an accessory building compared to a secondary? Something we need to discuss at some point, but I want to. Be sure that what we're. I'd like to come back to that after we've had discussions about. Um, few of the other things to see if we need both of those terms, or maybe we don't.
I don't think you have a definition for secondary building, but it's used in.
So that's a good catch. Um. Anybody else?
I'll comment on page three. We have the, the house under the integration system. Um, I think we talked about earlier how it's able references other. Tables, like at the very bottom, it's like, see table eight. Make sure we, we're not pointing people.
It's, it's graphic with the possible frontages.
Definition just. Functional frontage.
I'm with you, but what Colleen's saying is that in the graphic.
Oh, yes, 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 absolutely. Does that happen? Yeah, yeah. Yes.
All right.
Yep. I do think that's a good place for it, um, as we reference those terms.
Okay, anybody else? I think. About adding secondary building. Giving both accept, secondary building and accessory. Accessory building, thank you. Then on, um. So it looks like, um, section. Four point six, um. A, B, C, and D, and the changes that we had talked about. Making there were all set, that's, that looks like everything that we talked about was included. Anybody see anything different than that? Um. You know, we're still, one thing that is, we still do need to come up with is the, you know. Uses for the, in the G C Rs and. Somewhat different than the G C, because these are. Four point six is. G C, so.
So one of the things that you'll see that I. I did not email, but I. Put from the center here. Chairs is, is this table. And. Last. When we met, um. We talked about the shared use. It wasn't.
Yeah, it was.
Um. And I said that I would get you a table that. Showed what. Section each of, each thing would fall into. And while I was doing that, some of these thought. Um. Tried to. Consolidate some of the uses. They're not. Um. I would say that part is still rough. There's still work to do on that, but I did want to give. You an idea of what falls into what category and. There are some categories that. Are either blank or are, you know, commissioned to determine. So, for instance, the first two. Um. Going speak. To the accessories. Buildings and accessory uses. Um, because that could be. That could get very fuzzy at some point. Um. Easier to do an accessory, to judge an accessory building. Uh, but accessory uses, making sure that. They are, I mean, we have them in our regulations, but as we saw when we were going through them, some of them were like. I'm not sure that's accessory, and, you know, does it matter? What's the relationship? It's usually defined as. An accessory use is usually defined as something that is subordinate to the primary use. But. I can easily see. Examples where that might not be the case. So. It is left to. The commission's judgment. For instance, if there is a. Primary use of a. Um, building with a kiln, for instance. And. The. Accessory use is thought to be. Or applied for as. You know, a potter studio. But then there's also a coffee shop in there. Or a, you know, a game. Place or something. Um. How much of that, you know, how detailed do we want or need to be? Um. In deciding, so some of these are. Just basically. It's, it's time for the commission to. Use concept, let's say that, this is okay.
So, the, the, the table, there's, that is actually about part.
Yes.
We, we, we talked about grouping those things together for. You know, but.
This is a more detailed. Um. This basically. Took. The uses that we have. And tried to not make them quite so detailed and.
Yeah.
Roll them up a little bit. Yeah, so, for instance, I, I know we, we talked. Last time, I mentioned the. Places of assembly as opposed to. Houses of worship or auditoriums, or, you know, just. Let's try and get things as. Complete, but not so detailed that it. Means us and everybody else basically. Just a layer of common sense. It's a difference. Yes. I think, when you are already in a recession without accessory building, first is secondary buildings. Or accessory dwelling units, it is helpful to see this. Um. List of usage, and then also to look at our, um, four point six. Point, E, for instance, uses of great accessory buildings. You don't actually have. Any other references to a secondary building other than a cable. So maybe it's the dimensional standards, that we might want to just. Change over to that accessory building.
Yeah, what I was thinking as we said here was the definition of accessory building. Might be, uh, an outbuilding with an accessory use rather than accessory unit.
Yes.
That way. If you, if you're talking about another building on the property. And you refer to it as, as an accessory building, that means it's not. The other apartment building of the same parcel. It is not an apartment building, it is a.
Gym.
Shed, gym. Kiln room. Shed, gym, kiln room, storage locker, so whatever, you know, but it's not the one with. The primary use.
Yes, like what I mentioned, how they subordinate to the primaries.
So an accessory building. That houses a secondary use.
Yeah, your definition right now says an outbuilding with an accessory unit. Okay, if you just said use, accessory use. But secondary buildings probably use its own definition.
Yes.
And like. I don't know where a secondary building, how accessories. Accessory building is different from secondary building with the way we have this standard.
One way I've seen them used differently is that. One is a, like an addition that's attached to the building. That could be used either as an addition to a building or it can be used as a. As a. Like a route to a second building, but that's enclosed. And I'm not sure. How. This is one of those things where I've, I've seen it used elsewhere. I don't know how, whether we need that level of detail or not. But I will go back and take a look.
Do we need to have a term for. The other apartment building on the same parcel. Maybe you have one that is up front, places a street. And you have one also behind. It serves the same basic purpose. You know, same, same function, same, it's all, they're all, they're both, you know, just dwelling units. Yeah, but it's just another building, whether it's exactly the same size or, you know, a few feet shorter, whatever. Same purpose. It's not a shed, it's not a full, it's not an accessory building. It's the other building. Are we going to use secondary building for that? Do we need a term for that, you know? Multiple primary purpose building.
Well, if, if there were multiple, let's say a, a apartment. Just, just. So if there's multiple. Say there's a, we've got an acre and instead of putting up one big building, necessarily wants to put it up, you know, two smaller. On that person. Then that would all be part of that. I mean, they'd both be part of the primary use, correct? So. Second, a secondary user, accessory use could be like a. Right. You know.
I think we're, I think you talked about the accessory terminology. Cause we've got, you know, list of what can be and all that. I'm just thinking, you know, for example, one of the. One of the old school properties in, in the town or the city actually is being turned over. One, one vision was multiple, like six townhouse units built. All the same purpose, basically all the same design, size, shape and whatever, but, but not the primary building or the other buildings. Not sheds, but what do you call them? Do you need a term? To identify the next building or the other building.
We might need to, otherwise we'll have issues with needing a setback.
Right. They can't all be, it could be from the road, you know what I mean? Yeah.
But they, but at least twenty feet. They could.
Right, but the primary one can't be more than eighteen feet from the road. We just established that, you know.
Yeah, which we want, we want. Yeah, sorry.
There's, yeah, so, so I guess the way you have to. You'd have to look at it. I don't know how to write a regulation that describes this, but. Uh, the one that's closest to the road, that's the, that's the one that's got to meet like the front setback requirement.
Correct.
And next building behind it. Is, does not have to be that.
It has to be at least eighteen feet. So you could have. It's possible to have more than one building. Let's say you turn them. I'm not sure this would be a great idea, but just for the sake of discussion. Let's say you turn them perpendicular to the road.
Sure.
And you had three in a row.
The courtyard's in between.
Yeah.
Whatever. Yep, yep.
Then I think you would want. I mean, you might want them all to be.
Yeah.
The eighteen feet back. I think that's where the frontage buildout issue comes into play though. Where let's say you had three buildings perpendicular to the road. And the middle one was pulled further back. So the first two are at eighteen or five or wherever they need to be, somewhere between zero and eighteen. But then you can make up the rest of what needs to be the rest of the percentage of the frontage buildout. With. Landscaping or fencing or some kind of a, a street screening mechanism. And still have that, that middle one further back. So that the, that interior courtyard has its different character than it might if it was. You know, three buildings that we two care, two, two different. Separate courtyard areas. These are also kinds of, the kinds of things that are going to be. Some of this stuff will get worked out with the applicants before it comes to you. So that there'll be names for these things before we get here.
That's all I'm thinking is, you know, if you say that. That frontage is, you know, this minimum, this maximum. And, and, and so no building or combination of buildings can violate those terms. But if you, if you refer to a secondary building as any building on the property that's not an accessory building. Must meet these, you know, and like you said, it's going to be at least this far back. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't fall into the. Mid max from the front from the right of way, it's another building that's got to be at least, you know, so maybe that forces that little building to be setback available. You know.
So you could make the, you could make the argument as. The applicant.
Yeah, I'm with you. I.
That, that you, you know.
Yep.
They're coming in and for topographic reasons or for whatever reasons they want everything lined up. Or they could pull that.
So all I'm asking is, do we have language that supports? Three buildings that all meet the mid max from the right of way and the. You know, the driveway passages width and all those things. It doesn't matter how many buildings you use to achieve that.
The frontage build out language is what secures that.
Whether it's one building or multiple buildings.
Yes.
And I, so I'm just trying to protect us from confusion or weaponization of our own words later by having a definition for. Other building that doesn't, that falls elsewhere on the property that is not a shed, you know.
So, so if, if, if we have your example, let's say, side setbacks would be from that. Be from those two buildings on either end, correct?
Yes, assuming you're, you're working on one parcel. Sorry, I noticed this in last.
Yeah, but, but it's, you know, I mean, sometimes it's a picture, pictures out, right? So, so the side setbacks would be from that, the outer, you know, right and left edge sides of the two. Edge buildings on the edge.
Yeah, right. And you could have a building further back.
Right.
That. Doesn't, that's at least. The front yard setback plus twenty feet back. As long as it meets that.
But right now, that language applies to accessory buildings. Okay, or where it says secondary, right, right.
Right, so. I think that's the difference between the bulk, the, the building itself and the use. It's still a primary use. But it can, you can look at it as being in a building in the secondary position.
Right, so, so.
So it's in the second layer.
Or third, but, but, but it would. So, so it's, so when you, when you, when you look at this, you have to look at, so, so we have like. Four buildings on that parcel that are all for the primary use, right then. Only one of them has to, I mean, one of them has to meet, but somehow they have to meet the front of. There's multiple fronts of a building. They all have to meet the setback required.
They have to meet it right or they can. You could have that. You could have, this is the road. You could have, get rid of that front piece. And have that pushed back because it meets or exceeds.
Such, well, but it, but it exceeds the eighteen foot maximum. So now it can't, it can't be using the same language as the frontage. It's got to have some other name to it.
It becomes not a principal building.
Right, it becomes a secondary building.
Right, you wouldn't let all three of them slide back that far. But for aesthetics and all kinds of other good reasons, you might, you might indent one. And, but by our definition, we would allow that because we have language to allow it. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're.
Yep, and you would have. It, that, that frontage build out is what would. Make that okay to do because you could slide one building back, but you're making up for it. With. Landscaping or fencing or something. So you're keeping the street edge, which is what's so important about that front.
Yep.
That line, you're keeping that street edge, but you're not necessarily keeping that with.
Right, so we've got the, I think we've got the frontage protected. But in the example where you have four buildings there, I can see. In some of these properties that are really big acreage and are doing that. Um, how we might want to have four buildings like that all the same size because it is an apartment complex with, with business is the bottom or whatever. Um, however, as soon as we get back into that second layer, if we go call it a principal building. And it has to therefore go under secondary building, then we have a maximum height twenty five.
Right, which we don't necessarily.
Set a backside for secondary building. Well, maybe we should have set that for accessory buildings.
Yes, so now we need both.
And I can, if you're looking at these examples and what the size lot you have, even if it's one of the larger sized lots. Somewhere in there, you've got to park it.
Yeah, that, that, that all assumes that there's room for parking and you're not exceeding any percent of the.
Makes me think that there's going to be roads maybe in between those.
Right, which I've already pictured.
Right, well, the setback was applied only to the public, the public right of way, to the public road. Okay. But if you wanted to encourage walkable dense development, you could say something about. Drive, drive out, but I, I've never seen that before. It looks like it's simple as possible.
So, yeah, I'm not trying to make it more complicated. I'm just trying to make it. Simple enough that our own words don't get tricky and. Plus fusion or something.
So maybe the best approach here is, was he want to go back and. Pick up, think, think, pick this through and, and come up, come back to us with, you know, some ideas about how to. Massage the language so we don't. We, we don't, we don't, we don't want to do the Minneapolis.
Yes. Yeah, that was. Like most accessory buildings. End up dealing with those gyms offices.
Yeah, and I really think we can accomplish that by just clean definition of the secondary building. You know. A building on the property that may have a principal use, it's not an accessory.
Right, yeah, that's what we use, but.
Then give it the same maximum dimensions as the primary.
Me right, this, that, this. Which means one, he has to say it, so.
Oh, just a definition for secondary building.
Yes.
It's some use this to guard the primary use, right?
Right, yeah.
But it's. Go ahead.
As primary use may not conform to, it may be elsewhere on the property and, and meaning that it doesn't necessarily conform to. It would have to conform to the setback requirements as if it were accessory, but it's not an accessory use. An accessory building that utilizes the primary use. Sure. Then we already have a definition.
Yeah, if we're going to use accessory building as. The defined way with the dimensional standards, you've got a kind of way to describe secondary building without moving that.
Or add primary slash secondary to our current.
Yes.
You know.
So the secondary building will be defined by the.
A building that's not the primary building that utilizes the same primary use.
It's sort of, yes, so it's the secondary building is defined by use and the accessory building is defined. By bulk.
So, and use.
And, and, yeah, because we also define accessory use.
The definition would be an additional building that utilizes the primary use.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good place to start.
Secondary building would be a.
And, and the, secondary building would be an additional building that. Has the same primary use or has the primary.
Same use as a principal building.
Imagine. And then four buildings, you know. First floor doctor's offices, apartments upstairs, you know, you know what I mean? I mean, just things that you could do on a acre and a half parcel.
And then the only difference between a principal building and a secondary building would be. That the secondary building doesn't have the minimum setback.
There's a minimum front.
Frontback, right.
Right.
I can't wait to come in tomorrow morning.
Other, other, um. Questions or comments on that, on definitions?
Yes, I actually, when I was looking to. You know, I have like all my sources on my desk, I feel like I still want to turn paper and all. And. Nobody defines posted speed like this. This is not, this is, this will be easy.
We could, we could take it out.
You know, I, I think if you were a qualified motor vehicle operator. You. When my definition shows. Part of your, it's part of your qualifications as a, as a driver. So I don't know that we have to define.
Okay, this is really bad. This is. It was question sixteen on the questions in the back of the motor vehicle study guide when I was taking, you know, the. That when I was studying to get my license and the answer was that it was the. Not that you couldn't go faster than what the posted speed was and. Was appropriate, the appropriate speed for weather conditions or street and weather conditions or something like that. Was appropriate, the appropriate speed for weather conditions or street and weather conditions or something like that.
And, so, uh. So if we don't need to, if, if it's generally understood that you should take the definition out, I just.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll either be clear.
Nothing there, but, but I mean, maybe, maybe the state drivers' manual was the place to look. Definition of posted speed. All right, any, I mean, anything else in, uh, in definitions? Uh, we talked about principal uses by, uh, site plan approval and by special permit approvals, all of the, okay, does anybody have any? Comments there? We've got, uh, accessory, permitted accessory building structures and uses, so.
I'll tackle all of that.
Okay, but I mean, there's a, you know, that's where it talks about a usage code subordinate.
Right.
And incidental to the principal, so that, that's a, that's a pretty good definition of accessory.
Yeah. So that would follow the rule that we have this. What was formerly my secondary building, right, with the max height of being twenty five. You can say all we want, certainly accessory.
I think so, you know. I, I, I think we were using accessory and secondary interchangeably.
Right.
We, we, maybe. Um, yeah, I, I think what we were talking about was an accessory building. We established the, the. Max length was a garage or something like that, it was. Second, there is a primary use.
So on the twenty five feet also allowed you to have a. Sort of, or two story complex office. You know, housing office, complex or something.
And because this is not for residence, strictly residential zones. We don't, we're not, we're not running into what I think probably would be an issue. If somebody next to your house, you know, basically. In a, in a single family. So, it's gonna put up a twenty five story, twenty five foot, um. Garage accessory, you know, because they want two stories for an accessory dwelling in it. We can. Jump off that bridge and get.
So to say of clarity, um, for the dimensional standards, where you wanna change the secondary building. Heading there to accessory building? Is that what we're reading there?
I think so, I think so, and then, but it's in our discussion.
Yeah, and we would just say principal building and secondary building, the principal building parts, because they should be equal.
They're not equal in front setback.
Okay, so we have to make a new.
It's the distinction between the use and the building. There's a primary use and there's a primary building, they may not be the same.
So for, so for principal building where it says min max height, we could say principal slash secondary building. And then down below where it says front setback, that could be accessory building.
Right, did you draw or?
I didn't, I did not.
I'm not. Welcome to my world. Just, I just had this question in my head, where if I can not see, it's like, you know, doctor's offices on the bottom, apartments on the top, restaurants, whatever. Where have you got multi-use buildings, and so. Are we gonna have any issues when thinking too strict on the principal use of a building, or are we gonna have issue? Developers coming and saying, well, I have restaurants on the bottom, like you said, I could. But I also have apartments, so what use do I follow under, is that a big issue?
I think there's a. I'll make sure that there is a clear understanding that there is mixed use allowed, and once we say that there's an excuse allowed.
Yeah.
Then it's. We may need to decide whether those uses are compatible. So a kiln underneath the daycare center. Maybe mostly a building code issue, but it may also be a. You know, let's look at this very carefully.
All right, so. Are we ready to? Move on? So we've got the, uh, you took, there's the permitted accessory buildings and structures. Uh, I think one of the, one of the things that we need, we need to get the GCR uses. Together, because that's really where we're gonna want them to allow a. Mixed use and multifamily buildings, it's, it's in the GCRs.
Yes.
That, that's where we're most interested. A lot of that type of use, correct, so. That's, that's what we.
And if you look at just that first column in. This table. The list is still long, but it's not as. Long and cumbersome as. What we've. What we have now.
Right, yeah, between the three pages and stuff.
And I think that there is, um. So, if I was doing this just for uses and not for parking. I would explode, for instance, the retail line on page. Just like an inch and a half down on page three. So that we are looking at. Uh, we've had tables before us before where it was, you know, if it's five thousand square feet or less, it's. Site plan, if it's over. It's a special permit, um. It's, you know, basically, it's the. It gets put into as of right site plan or special permit based upon the intensity of the. Both the, and or the use and or the. Size of the. Building and its impact. Um, primarily on the street, but. As part of it.
Right, we would define those kind of things in the permitted uses.
Yes.
Parking that's followed. Um, okay, any other comments on, um. I guess the, uh, what brings us to dimensional standards, right? And, um, where you talked about the, the, uh, principal building front setback. Um, also on the principal building side setback, uh, GCR, we've got a different. Side setback requirement from all the others, and that stuff we can get decided to standardize almost this. The zero, the, zero to twelve foot backs.
Yeah, I was gonna ask what's the reason why.
You know what, that was different.
Have we ground them all down to zero to twelve?
We, we did, we rounded them all to the, the zero, the, the zero. So it's just, just. We already talked about the, the front setback there with all the, uh. Zero to eighteen foot backs. Anything else on the table? I, I noticed the rear setback on the GC still. Twelve foot minimum and everything else is three, is that, you write that way, or is that?
I had in my notes, we were saying that's a three minimum as well.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought as well, so. So where we are.
The secondary building.
No, the principal building rear setback, GC, no.
Principal building. Oh, yes, oh, the, um. Yes, same. So same right here.
Okay, so. Easily, that's easily fixed.
Yeah.
Side setback. I thought we deleted the twelve foot max.
Changed it to thirty.
Changed it to three, right?
Yeah.
But we, we have a three foot minimum, but we, I think we took out the max. And then I, I have one more question about the. Max percent lot coverage.
Sorry, Balkan, which, uh, where was the three foot max side setback?
No, there's a, a side setback on the, for the second, sorry, for the secondary building.
Okay, yep.
And, and we've got one, this is.
Front's twenty foot minimum, side. And rear are three foot minimum.
Right, and then, and then for the GCR fifty seventy five, um. Fifty point seventy five, we're saying three foot and then twelve foot max. You said, I had in my notes, we're deleting the twelve foot max, I didn't think. And then I, s- s- you okay, Jason?
I am, yeah, but, yeah, I just, I just heard.
I, I wasn't.
I, I wrote this up just to turn over to Leslie about where, where on that chart we're gonna change accessory and secondary. So I, where it says principal building min max height, I added secondary as well, principal and secondary. And then where it says secondary building backside, cross out secondary, just put accessories. And then down below, under setbacks, you've got principal that remains the same. And then where it says secondary, but also add accessory. Yeah, so primary, principal and secondary are paired for min max, but accessory and secondary are paired for setbacks.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right, I'm good with this. Yeah, we still want, we still wanna, you know, still wanna make things side setbacks, whether it's accessory or secondary building, right? Don't run up properly. The other question I had was about the, the max percentage lot coverage, and I. I thought we had talked about, um, and this is where we get into the, to the. Open space, but, I, 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 would it make sense to add a footnote? To these that's, that says that, you know, the maximum. Percentage lot coverage, if it's eighty percent and added total peruse. We would add a footnote that says subject to open space, out of the recreation area requirements of section six point one five eight. I mean, does that, that make sense, because you wanted to, as, as a way to make sure that, you know, it's. It's the purpose covered is eighty percent, but you also have, you still have to leave room for. Open space based on. Section six point one, so you just, it'll just be a footnote that says, you know, it's eighty percent, but. Subject to, you know, requirements of the open space section of the regulations. As a way to.
Yeah, I think we don't have a six point one, right?
Well, we, there, there's an existing six point one.
Oh.
That's where the existing open space. Requirements are kept. Hidden. But that, and, and, I like this, maybe precise. But, uh, I. I'm just passing it out, there's a way to make sure that doesn't get overlooked.
Well, you wouldn't want it to contradict itself.
Right.
So. But I don't think that we have been discussing. That form one point eight recently, right?
No.
It's, it's something that was in the GC. Already?
That's in, that was in, that's in the multifamily.
And those. Multi-family regulations. We don't read clearly as to whether they are. For any multifamily regulation, or any multifamily application. Or if you're doing a multifamily complex. It looks like it was a bit more for something like, um. Grotton Estates or Branford Manor, where you have multiple, and there are plenty of other places around. Around the city where you have multiple. Buildings with. Multiple units within each building. And the amount of space between the buildings and how much, as opposed to a more. Neighborhood defining relationship of buildings. They're more like objects in a field, as opposed to. The creation of the edges for a public ground.
So, so I'll get into this, since we're, I mean, one of the things we wanna talk about is the, is the open space regulations, I mean. I would pull this into that. Work our way through the open space thing and then see how. If it needs to be somehow tied into this table.
Yeah, I definitely agree, if, if we are gonna make a statement about. Space elsewhere. We don't want it to, you know, conflict with, with the maximum lot usage.
Right, so, you know, but let's, we can, we can, we can. Hammer that out when we, when we're done with our open space. So, makes sense?
Yeah, the, my, um. The. The one that we would need to be the most concerned about, the only one that potentially we'd need to be concerned about. Is the GC number. Because. These other four, these other four zones can, we can put what we want because they're new. Did that make sense?
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand, it's just, so we just, we have the. Slight one.
You're asking, are we concerned that we have an existing condition in the GC that maximum lot usage, if we regulate sixty percent, will we? Make somebody not compliant?
Because that's a max, that, yes, I, I'm not sure that there's anything that would be. It's there, that's more than sixty percent, oh, definitely more than sixty percent. Some, basically. Parking that's with a building, um.
What are the sixty percent?
I can only check a little bit. I think we're okay to see that, I just.
All right, um. Parking and loading regulations. Comments? Questions?
What did the definitions say for effective radius?
Yeah. I had a note that said we're gonna put something in here about. On street parking directly to the place two four twenty frontage. Parcel from five hundred feet. And I don't know if it goes there or. This was also a. Location of parking sections.
I think that's where it should go.
Okay, that, you know, as long as we, we talked about putting it in there. I mean, basically because of the discussion we had. With the eighteen things we. Special apartment, right? Designated apartment places on the street. So, where where we belong. Other questions, comments, anyone?
I have one just for. Clearly, uh, we talked about. As we were talking about making um more narrow roadways or walkability, um. But I did wanna clarify that in parking lots, we might have. Um, a contradictory note because parking lot aisles are typically twenty four feet wide. So just making sure that it's clear that when we say drive one aisle, we don't need the center of the ninety three parking. That's important too, because that's where. An emergency vehicle could access the building from, it's not a twenty foot wide parking.
Right, and they actually only need.
They need twenty feet for. For it to stop and use. So, and if you have a bonus over three stories, I think twenty sixty for the for the ladder. But that. All it's, you need to have eight locations where they have that with within five hundred feet of the building. Like, it has to do with where the fire hydrants are and where the the vehicle. So it doesn't have to, it doesn't mean that every drive aisle on the building needs to be that wide. Because obviously they use our roadways to get places and those are two footers.
So they could, they could use the street out front as a space where they.
Exactly, yeah. So that's the. The nuance there.
But we always have. We have, we have a, when an application comes in, it automatically goes to um. It it goes to fire marshal, it goes, we have a just. Either Danny or I type in site plans and that it goes, it's already set up and it goes to. Fire goes to police, goes to building. Yeah, right, GU, so. We, we don't always get comments back, but that's usually because they don't have comments. And for larger projects. We also will. Not with the commission because we all will have to rule on these applications, but we will have. Internal meetings. With department heads and um. The applicant to go over. For the fine two, we did that with them. One of the ones we did that with was Colonel Ledger. But we've done it with a few. Oh, we definitely did. Just to make sure that everything. You know, the last thing we need is to waste everybody's time and have them come to the commission and it's like, oh, but you. Nineteen feet instead of twenty feet. Twenty one feet instead of twenty two. So we do try and.
Yeah, no.
Get all of that.
I will just talk about.
You made that, to to give it a line of state that.
Yeah, and I'm I'm gonna. There, there are diagrams. That I can drop in also.
Yeah, it wasn't as bad as, yeah, um, and it's only time for me for ninety three.
Right.
All right. Other questions, comments on? Parking and loading regulations. Under the on table. The table on seven, one B. Number six, hospitality uses. It's got twelve spaces per one thousand square feet. And that's different from the shared parking section, which says. It runs, including bargains have been saying this retail and stuff.
That is entirely possible, you said not been reconciled with each other.
So we do, I guess we need them consistent.
The um. hypo under number two institutional uses in that same. Uh, table is also so that. The uh place assembly. Yes.
Yes. Others, thanks. Fourteen, fifteen. Sixteen or seventeen.
Are you looking at pages?
I have a question related to the parking calculations and the table that I was giving those today. So, the functions on the new table P, are they supposed to match with the functions under the shared parking factor?
The functions.
So when I see civic under the function of a. So on that new table, where does civil support as a function fall under for healthcare? That not included in the parking calculations?
It's usually that it needs to be that it's a decision by the commission. It's, it's not as. Because those are can be so different. For instance, if you have the difference between. A an auditorium or a gymnasium. The seating capacities. Are very different from like a a place of worship. Can fit more people in.
So. I guess my question is, everything else on the shared parking factor, you know, we have civic, we have other, although other isn't. We don't only share parking factor, civil support is listed for nursing homes, medical office and rehabilitation facilities. But isn't mentioned anywhere else, so I'm not sure if. We want that should stay as civil support or include it somewhere else, I'm just not. Sure why we include it on the function. When function is listed somewhere else and it's not.
Do not follow.
The table above the fuzzy math has functions.
Yes, it does not include.
This, this lists functions.
Yeah.
Civil support is not a named function above the fuzzy math.
Correct. It, these two, these two um. This with the document with the other part of. What's in here need to be reconciled.
Okay.
So, I would worry less about the, it's a good point, I would worry less about the civil support issue than. First of all. It's going to.
Well, you have a category of other that's to be determined by the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we just change these to other.
Yeah.
That way we take another case by case basis, just as described.
Makes sense. Um, in the, I guess the, you know. In in general, that's shared, the shared parking calculations. That table. Is. Needs to be harmonized with. The summer part.
Yes.
So, because I'm.
They're, they're from two.
Right, but they have, but they have different numbers, so we set that.
Right.
Figure out which ones we want, some places retail.
Retail is four or twelve or twelve, yeah. And I, I, I would not. Would not want a meeting commission that has many things that fall under other. And have to. You know. I mean, really what you're doing is you're, you're looking at the, you're looking at the shared parking. Chart, you know, the fuzzy math chart and you're. Determining where best to put this particular use. In that chart to determine the calculation used for parking, shared parking, so. You know, it would really be the commission's burden to say, what are you doing with that yet? How many seats are there to be? Okay, where does this really fit nicely on the chart to? Demand of the property developer, X number of spaces on the property and X number of overflow spaces elsewhere shared, you know, that kind of thing. And I, so I wouldn't want to leave too many things up to. A commission to just have to. Well, because, because there there's just too many opportunities for inconsistency on the part of the commission, I mean, us or our successors. To to have to make those decisions, but I need to set them up, set us up or set them up.
A chart or something uniform as opposed to, well, I know you, so. We'll let you have size.
Sure. Yeah, it's something we can stand on. And I I realize that there's can be one size fits all, but.
Even if it's, even if it's recommended, sure.
The, the other thing is. That it is. There's some places in Connecticut, for instance, they eliminated all required parking. I know that that doesn't work so well. Um, Hartford was the first to do it. At least of of a large municipality and they're in the process of changing that. Um, which. Was unpredictable. But. Setting a maximum is. We, and we had talked about this and I've done this in other places is. Basically what that maximum sets for you is. Says you have to do this if you want more than that. It has to be impervious. Surface, so you're change, you're generally making them spend more money to change the surface type. Sorry, yes, yeah, yeah.
Why, uh, how? How would we do that? Would we have a?
I have language for that, then, okay, yes.
Yeah.
So they can have, so somebody could have as many spaces as they want theoretically. But. The purpose of it is, you know, general. Exactly.
I saw a nice previous parking area that I had to take a picture of. It's got interlocking L shaped bricks with grass between it.
Alright, so um. Sure. Uh, the parking calculations, that section we're gonna call shared parking.
Yes.
Yeah. Because of. That, this whole, this whole section applies to shared parking.
This one or? Yes, this one. Yes.
Age eighteen.
Yeah.
And um. I, so I, I look through the examples. And I, I come up with different. Then, then you did, I. It's it's more fingers than I have, so. But I use my phone. But. So. So also get, can we look at example one, and you can check what, because, because the office has meets forty spaces, right? In the residential, there's, there's forty five one bedrooms that we say. That, that requires fifty spaces, even though I think it would be forty five, right, because it's one bird. One bedroom only requires one space. Right? So I'm just trying to make sure, make sure I understand how this is supposed to work. So, you know. So, if that's forty five and fifty five two bedroom units, the one ten. And so, total for the, the total for the residential would be. You know, it would be one fifty five, right? And, and then, but there's, we don't say what the total would be for the whole building. Right, so, so we say that, you know, after you do the. Fuzzy man, you do the hundred and ninety two, we don't have the number that. You would have needed, that, you know, so that we went from two hundred to one ninety two. Which I think would be. For clarity of the example. Right? The the total required for the office and the residential is based on the numbers that are on this page to. Correct? It's forty plus one sixteen.
Wait, it's forty five.
Well, it's forty, oh, okay, it's forty five.
So. What I'm understanding is it has thirty two plus one sixty for the office spaces, it's not saying forty for the office space, it's saying thirty two for the office space. And what it says in the office being two thousand square feet for two spaces is does not match. The uh gra, the table that's above the fuzzy math graphic. Where that says office is two spaces for one thousand square foot. Uh, so I think there's an issue with the example that. The office shouldn't equal forty spaces, it should say equals thirty two spaces. So it says.
Okay, I know.
Yeah, you may, you may want to look at the, at the examples because they're. And, and then, so just to continue with my questions. So when we, we get down to like, what I think is the calculation of shared spaces. It says forty. Five required spaces, I assume that's for not. The um. Residential part, but that's only for the one bedroom.
Right.
So, I mean, is it, would would that calculation be based on, the sharing factor be based on? All the. All the units, all, all the parking spaces required for the. For the.
Yeah, this is just really weird the way that was was put in there.
Yeah.
All right, I will go back.
Like, to me, actually, it's money's the water.
Okay, I will, I will recheck.
Yeah, I wanna do the same thing to example two.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Other, uh, anything else on uh their department? Alright, next thing up is parking location and private roadway standards. I had a note that said, we've got to take out the garage, it shall be located behind the front yard setback plus twenty feet. Unless attached to a single family dwelling. Because it was covered in the setback. Sure, that's correct, but that's. It's the note. Bicycle parking, we had discussion about defining the size of. On that. Providing the size of the bicycle parking. Space, depending on whether we're installed. So, I mean, if we're gonna, you got a bicycle parking section, it makes sense to stick our. Definition of what, how big it is, what are you doing there? We did.
We will.
Oh, okay. Well, Leslie will consult her. The thesis looks. Under driveway, I always, we, you talked about entrance with, but then we decided we needed to put something there, because I think there's a. A um. Reference later to say it has to fly to state or city highway. Requirements, right?
Well, that would be true no matter what, we could put forty-five feet wide and or three feet wide and. It would still have to come.
Okay, so so we don't, we don't need to put anything there because later we say that. I know that's not so hard here, that it's.
We talked about curb cuts and the and that first article, the radius.
Yeah, under seven-one G. General layout required, must we say, all proposed curb cuts and access drive shop and plot with all applicable requirements of the state. Department of Transportation. When you're exiting the state highway and the city's department. Highway department when accepting city street. No, but um.
Took the next bullet. Enclosed loading spaces and looked it down to seven-one H loading space.
Yep.
And we took out. Bullet about no access drive aisle or maneuvering area, show out a turning radius of less than twenty, we just took that. I also made notes that we cut the second bullet point on top there, the general layer and traffic circulation.
Wait, which one is?
The second bullet, the seven-one G. We moved the first bullet to seven-one D.
Yes, and we took out, sorry.
We took out the warning guard.
Yep.
And we just deleted the second bullet.
Yep.
So then the first remaining bullet will be all proposed curb cuts, no change. And the next one is moved here at seven-one H, meaning loads loading. So the remaining second bullet will be individual parking loading spaces. We'll leave the next one. So bullet three will be where vehicles will be located.
Where vehicles be located, you have is remaining in G.
Yes. I didn't have any notes to change it, most of the. Just catching up some of the notes that we had taken last week about which things were moving to which other paragraphs?
I have, and you may have said this already, which you wanted, was asking, seven-one G. I have, we're changing the seven-one.
Yep, got that one, absolutely.
That's the first ball, correct, yes. And then. What's the fourth bullet, I think the current view goes to seven-one H. Well, loading space information, that's in place.
It says though, that bullet says at least thirty feet. From a street line, and we have yet to give distances to the layer lengths. So we may have to revisit that for consistency. Because the seven-one H says. All loading zones shall be located in the third layer.
So, there's a question for the layer terminology, is it specifically? Not specific? So that no matter what. Um zone or or building it's talking about, that first layer is defined by the area of the community street and the building face. Is that the definition of the first layer? So that, so the dimension might change, but that's the space that we're talking about?
The zero to twelve feet.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying thirty feet mark, if we. If the first layer could be twelve feet, the second layer is twenty feet, and we're.
Right.
Not the third layer, the thirty feet.
Yes.
Maybe that bullet that we moved just isn't necessary.
Right, because we have, we've talked about how it can't be in a front setback, it can't be. Um it needs to have a buffer from the street, have we given enough? Um restrictions on where parking can be. That's here, it's fine. We need to specify the third layer, or we have.
Or maybe just a generic comment that. It should be designed so that trucks when loading and unloading won't project over any street line. Because if you're thirty foot back, but you have a twenty foot cab and a fifty-three foot box, you're in the street, you know, so.
Right, so we took the thirty, thirty feet from any street out and just said any enclosed loading space should be located. So. So design the trucks while loading or unloading to not project over any street.
Yes, yeah.
But I guess, you know, if you get the, get the ask, are you trying to keep the action of loading? A certain distance back from the street line. Certainly, the truck can't be in the street, but do you just not want to see a free delivery distributor going up and down in a. Life form with a car, you know, I mean, what are we trying to do?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a person that thinks that that part is important.
Trying to make the the truck invisible.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, if you're living in a mixed-use area, you're now.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I mean, it's no different. You're, what happened at the Combi- the truck pulls him. But but it's a, I mean, and and that's where we get into that, you know, you can't park it there all day. Things bad, this is for, you know, loading and unloading.
There's no part.
Yeah, so, I really have next to these. Any enclosed loading space or open loading space. Shall be designed so that trucks when loading or unloading will not project over the street line. Sorry, I missed. So, it should be enclosed or open loading space. So just. How about any loading space? Yeah, yes, exactly, any loading space. And then go all the way, delete everything until shall be designed, shall be so just. Shall be designed so that trucks when we're loading will not project over any street. Right, we should kind of cover it in the whole. Seventy-one.
Well, that's, that that it's an onsite vehicle.
That's true.
That's that's my onsite thing. So, maybe basis. And then there's.
What did you just decide?
We said to leave the existing. First statement under seven. Right?
Okay.
We deleted for trail apartment, right? And we took out a bunch of wording in seven-one G, first bullet.
We took it out, but then we left it in.
I have every combined wording from the second bullet.
That's actually so.
Yep, we took out the.
We took out.
Yes, two, yeah, 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 got it. We talked about the buffer strip versus, so we have. Planting area of buffer strip, and I think we also made a winstein. So we want to consolidate that. I have a note that says we would like to align that wording with one base code. Yes, my my note further says, how to make this a good idea.
Under um, I mean, planting, oh, their their bullet below that, we changed, took out planting area within. The minimum of three feet, just the, we changed that the buffer strip. Yeah, that's gone.
Buffer strips shall be approved by the commissioner, city planner, I have that, as being related, yes.
Yeah, because the same thing, the next one, it says basically the same thing, right?
Just a public service announcement, according to the weather channel, in the radar picture. There's a thunderstorm about to roll through in about ten or fifteen minutes that lasts for about an hour. Not particularly concerned about it or sugar myself, but um.
Anybody's walking, I'm happy to see you arrive. Good, I'm glad we, I I thought we settled that.
Is there uh any, I'm going to. Do you want to go on, or do you want to call for tonight?
I think we need to do that. I'm happy to move that forward or do it tonight, anyway, I'm driving in rain, um. That's not. I I I'm. Getting a little tired.
So 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 let's, but let's 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 put up open space. Um till the till the next meeting, we want to try to set another one for August, right, because. It would be, I think, August twenty, is that what you're meaning?
And again, I really cannot tell you how much I appreciate this, it's. Sue, you sat in my office for about an hour last week and it was, and you could hear the. Promotion call, yes, it's.
Can I suggest that next time uh we meet to work on this, that we start in a new section? Because the last two or three sessions, we have started in a rehash. And we have not gained all that much ground, because we rehashed the same sections we we've now looked at three or four times. You know, we caught things each time, but we, I think, with provision control issues, I think we we would. Do ourselves a favor by starting fresh in new section, then eventually coming back for a. Or, you know, comprehensive editorial suite. You know, keep the notes we've taken, that kind of thing.
Which would be open space.
That's a good suggestion, yeah, we'll start with open space.
We have the existing language sent to us previously, what's intended, though, you know. Sure.
It's, I think it's actually, I think you sent it to to the commission in. I was looking around today, it's like a May the tenth, maybe. What was, it was on your, it had a different name on it, and. Colleen and Cameron, that was before you were on the commission, so. So you you weren't seen it.
Okay.
Well, Lizzie, I mean, I think it's out there.
Yeah.
Some somewhere, so you can. Alright, should we set it? Something with the amount in August or? About, no, August twentieth, yeah. For for four weeks.
So, thirty, another Tuesday, it's, it seems true. So the next few weeks are dry, the August, so. Of six. That's a Tuesday?
It is, yeah.
You have the whole week?
Thirteen and then the twentieth.
Well, we'll be friends, yeah, yeah.
August thirteenth, the twentieth is the next, and actually, that gives me time to. Get something, get all of this pulled together.
Alright, and we'll start, we'll start on the on the thirteenth with open space. Alright. Good, move forward, agenda of the board of commission, anybody have anything? Um, public communications, there was a, Oliver Commissioner received an email from Terry Rice. I want to state for the record that I had no communication with the mayor regarding any of the reappointments to the commission. That includes Mr. Eric Robb, Mr. Screeter, or Mr. Rice, before the mayor made his decision. Any assertions otherwise are completely false. So, just to get that on the record. Um, any, any, some of the written communications, listen. Um, reporter staff, can you please?
I think so, I'll continue to send you notices of. Training sessions as I get them.
You know, those, those, you know, thanks for summing that up, that was, that was a good session today, I guess, it's on their websites. A lot of statistics about housing. Price and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
One of the statistics that they gave was that most people want to live within. An area that has six different huge address stories. And that's what makes people move to those sort of things.
So the town, the town planning and zoning commission is, or. Economic development and planning and zoning have been putting on some community outreach. Sessions, and those have been both well-attended and and, you know, packed with information, so, you know. You see those advertised coming up by any process.
Yeah, I I agree, I've been, I've been to a few of those in every period. Um, there was one specifically about house. Um, there was one specifically, it's on house, too. And this was another presentation, it was really interesting, and I think those slides, I think, are probably available on the town books.
I think they said they were, yeah, I have not looked.
Somebody wants to send. To that, I'll send them out to everybody.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Alright, motion to adjourn?
No one. Second.
Alright, we got them, a motion and a second. Almost invariably say aye.
Aye.
Close abstentions. Alright, adjourn at, uh, eight twenty-seven.
Yeah. It's a bit early, if they turn a half minute to the broadcast, so.
Alright, can I? Thank you, but it looks like when you get to the door.
Yeah, I'll come back in.
If it's raining, come back.
Yeah, I will.